...agenda can be found on rockbridgepublicschools.org or at the table entering this building. At this time, I would like all to please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody, to the meeting. It's a beautiful day out. I hope everybody was able to get outside and enjoy the beautiful day. These days are numbered, so this is the last day we'll show up where there's actually daylight out until spring. Let the record reflect that all board members, so please make a note of that on your agenda. Josh Gibson.
Motion still have these changes.
No more discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. At this point, we will go down to visitor input. We have Maxine Brooke who would like to speak.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank all of you for supporting the program that we're doing in SMART. And recently, a chance to grow, which is a mother come to give SMART interviewed, and they wanted to know what was going on at Rock Ridge. So I'm going to pass out to you, this is hot off the press, that's right. This is coming out tomorrow on their website, but I wanted to show you what's going on. I'm also going to be showing you, I'm going to be sending you some videos of what's going on with the SMART program at the Laurentian, which I'm there two days a week. What was done, I just want to tell you about a couple of really cool things. I've been working with the nurse because the way we've been assessing vision has not been sufficient for our kids. And we found when I did some, some, working with the kids and kind of assessing last year, we saw that there was a gap in convergence. And those are the things that the monkey bars, swings work with. And we found a deficiency there with kids because a lot, lot has to do with computers. So Katie Peterson and I have been talking about this for over a year, and they are changing the way they're going to do the assessments because we found these inadequate ways. And she looked it up too, and we found out that, yes, this is part of what should be. So now these, the kids are doing assessments. I don't know if they started this week or not, but we have a new component in doing convergence along with the QD. So that's been a real important thing because we found a really, I don't want to say severe case, but a case where we had to kind of miss that, and we corrected it last year. Another thing too, the videos that I'm going to send you, this is just showing some of the pictures. I am working with some small groups of first graders because there was some extra time for us when we were doing the schedule at Laurentian, and we're doing these small groups. They're awesome. I'm going to be sending you some videos. I am working with the reading academy training that the teachers took this summer and implementing that. There's a different way in how they do things. They taught those teachers how to do a different way, how they sound out words. So we made these, these, I'm just going to send you all videos to show you because it's better if you can see the video. They're sitting on a ball, and they're doing left to right, and they're sounding out words because they, they taught the teachers to sound it out differently than we were doing before. And I'm, I also am working with some small, a fourth grader who I was, one of the neat things about having someone like me and my three minutes are up, okay, is that people can come to me with issues, and we're working on some issues. So thank you.
Thanks, Maxine.
This is just a little bit of what's going on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? No takers? Okay, we're moving on. At this time, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Pass amended.
Go move.
By Director Reardon.
Support.
Support by Director Yohan. Any discussion?
I have a question on 418. Just how did that get queued for? The Leader and Me conference.
You did get some grant money from the Leader and Me, but also, part of this would also come out of staff development. Because Leader and Me is a program we're doing in the seventh and eighth grade year, and so...
It's actually Virginia School, so if you can remember what it comes up as.
And so, yeah, so it's a program we're doing in the seventh and eighth grade year. And so this way, the people who are teaching it can go down and learn to implement it even better than they're doing right now. So that's where the money is coming.
And that's a different pop than, say, staff salaries, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Is any of the money coming out of that, what's that other program that we have? That, is it Cassandra Haney is, is here any?
Abbott?
No.
It's Core.
Here?
No, not Core, that big grant we had under Michelle Offert.
Yeah, the, they use the grant money, and then they supervise it under Core. I used to be in that club. We, that's where we did like all the activities and stuff.
I just wondered if some of that money was under that program too. Was it a five, you had a bunch of money?
Yes, but we're not using it for this.
Okay, and that's, we're not using it for that?
No.
And then, I see that this looks like North Star Elementary people. Are they all from the North Star?
Yes, because Scott Manny is from North Star, yes. And that's because the Leader and Me also goes into the elementary school also.
And that's what I was wondering, is this a K-12 program, or does this go through the Parkview? Have they had training and the Laurentian?
It's what we decide to make of it. So we're trying to take the program, make it work in Rock Ridge. And so it started in the seventh and eighth grade. This is a couple of years now. And so now it's going down into some of the elementary builds. So all three of the elementary buildings are aware of Leader and Me, Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. That's really what it is to a K-12 audience.
So all three elementaries will either have training or be trained on site, okay.
Okay, any more discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on. I think Willie, you're up next, I think. Hang on.
Yes, school per engagement and fundraising.
Willie, you're up. Thank you.
Got some backing tonight, huh?
Only problem is, is they're all from Evlith. Think they've been a little trouble.
A little intimidating for you.
Nothing wrong with that joke.
It is a complete joke.
Hey, Willie?
Everybody who understands me knows that that was a complete joke.
Willie, that gentleman right there on your left?
Wonderful.
On my left, Mr. Heady?
Yes.
Just watch what you say.
Wonderful.
Be safe for both these here, Jamie.
Fantastic. Well, thank you. Good evening. I'm fortunate enough tonight to share with you a classroom dedication. And as you can see, it means a lot to everybody here tonight. I truly enjoy doing these dedications. I have me Lynn Heady, Chuck Heady's wife, Debbie Heady Snitterich and Mark Snitterich, Jim and Terry Heady, Wendy Heady Rousey and Jim Rousey, John Heady and Trina Catola, Brian Redens, his dad Roger Redens, and his business partner Jeremy Watrous. They're all here tonight because we are here to dedicate a math, they are here to dedicate a math classroom in memory of a great Evlith High School math teacher, Mr. Chuck Heady. I would like to thank Brian Redens for his beautiful donation that made this dedication possible. And the plaque that will be going up at the school forever reads, "The Mr. Charles Chuck Heady Classroom." This classroom is forever dedicated to Mr. Charles Chuck Heady, who taught at Evlith High School for three decades from 1958 to 1988. Mr. Heady demonstrated a high degree of professionalism and excellence in his chosen profession. When class began, the chalk would fly. He didn't slow down for the full session, always prepared and eager to transfer as much information as possible during the period. There was little time for fun and games, but he cared deeply about his students and their education. To quote Brian Redens, "When he learned I was to attend the U.S. Air Force Academy, he called me aside my senior year and gave me additional assignments he thought might be helpful to me. By spending this extra effort and exposing me to math concepts beyond what we learned in senior math, I breezed through my first-year academy classes, setting me up for future success." As a graduate of Gilbert High School and a Division One athlete in college, Mr. Heady never missed a chance to wish his student athletes good luck before a big game, but he always waited until after the bell so that math instruction would not be impacted. Mr. Heady was an outstanding teacher who gave generously of his time and talents to positively impact the lives of so many. In 1985, he received the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. He will always be remembered. This dedication was made possible by a generous donation from Brian Redens, Evlith High School class of 1984, and Teresa Redens. And just the 30 minutes, the 60 minutes on a previous tour, he's our absolutely wonderful teacher. Mr. Redens would like to say a few words. And check out his jacket. I'll take it.
I came dressed appropriately in case anyone wants to know which part of this organization I came from. No, yeah, just thanks to Willie for this amazing event. Thanks, thanks to the board for making all this possible. I, I really feel blessed coming from this school. We had good teachers, and Chuck Heady was a great teacher. I remember, I was kind of a screwball in class. My dad did the test to the back. I had pretty good grades, but I was, I always seemed to be getting in trouble. My, my grades were good except for that one called Conduct in junior high. But I don't know what, the first couple of days, what Mr. Heady said, but I remember I came in and was talking or screwing up or something. And I don't know what he said, but I remember from that moment on, I knew, I'm not screwing around in this class. He was a very serious guy. He wasn't there to be your, be your friend or be your buddy. He was there to teach you math. He took it very seriously, and he was very good at it. He knew his subject, and he dedicated himself to excellence and accountability in that subject. And, yeah, so it helped me a lot, and I know he helped a lot of other young people as well. So what you all do is very important, and it can last for many, many years. So he's a great example of how to do it. So thanks for the opportunity, and thanks to the family for being here and for participating in this, and, yeah, thanks a lot.
Wonderful, thank you. We'll let you go on to your meeting. We're going to head out this way and then go see the classroom because the plaque is already up, so we're going to head that way.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're up. You didn't say anything though.
Hang on, hang on. Moving along, 5.1, Laurentian Elementary Principal's report. Angie, right there.
Good evening, everybody, and greetings from the Laurentian staff. This year started off, our third year at Laurentian Elementary, and it definitely has been the best start of the year, of the three years so far. We have a great student body, pre-K through sixth grade, all very good kids. Our sixth grade group who leads the building, being the oldest, they're great role models for our young ones. So right now, with the student body that we have and the teachers working together, it's been a fantastic start. So I'm looking forward to a great year this year. Last year, when I stood in front of you at this time, we had the, almost the exact same amount of students starting. So last October, when I was here, we had 483 students. That was kindergarten through sixth grade. And this year, I have 484 at this time, so we're one ahead. Last year, starting off with 43, we did gain students throughout the year. We were close to ending up at 500 students. So from last spring, yep, we're back down to 44. But hopefully, we'll be gaining students throughout this year as well. But we're exactly, you know, pre, one-off, same start of students K through six. A little bit about our math and reading MCA scores, because that was last spring. And then they're kind of hush, hush for a while before we can talk about them publicly. So I just wanted to give some highlights on some of our, our scores. And just remember, in our building, we have third through sixth grade with reading, third through sixth grade with math, and then our science scores. All of, in every category, we were above the state average, which, what we want to be. In reading, we were at 62%, and the state was at 52%. And what is even more impressive, I think, is, yep, 62%, we're higher than the state, which we need to be. But they also measure and give us the data about our, how much our students have progressed because that's really what we want to do. We want, no matter where they're at, even if they're starting low, if we may get them to progress, they might not get out of the does not meets, but at least they've made some gains. We had 77% of our students make improvements in reading, which is really high. So that means that they maintained or they improved their achievement level. They went from a does, does not meets to a partially meets, or partially meets to a meets or meets to exceeds. So 77% of our student population at least made gains, gains or stayed the same. So that's really good. And then in math, we were at 59% third through sixth grade. And again, the state had 50% proficient. So above, about 10% were above the state level. Like I said, is which, where we want to be. Our fifth grade science had the biggest gap between the state and what we were for proficiency. Fifth grade science statewide, 45% of the students in fifth grade are proficient in science. And in at Laurentian Elementary, we had 64.7 proficient. So that was almost a 20% gap between where the state was. And if we could get every subject to have that 20% gap, that's where we want to be. We want to be in the 70 percentile, 80 percentile proficient. So that's what we always shoot for. And this year, we're going to work with staff a little bit on targeted goals. So they always have a class goal. They want to get their class from 58% proficient to 80%, let's say. Well, then, we want, I'm going to work with the staff this year about having a targeted goal for just a group of kids that are right on that bubble to meet that meeting standards. So we're going to work with them on, on having a targeted goal for the kids that are not receiving interventions, kids that do not receive special services from our special education teachers, and look at that group of students, and what can we intentionally plan interventions for those group of students? And can we progress monitor those more often to hopefully get more than that 10% gap that we want from the state level? So that's, that's kind of our goals this year for Laurentian. One of, one of many is to increase that reading. And I also want to bring to your attention that something else that we're doing new this year is we're being intentional and setting a goal of making sure that we recognize every one of our students for some, something positive. Every single student, all, how many students did I say? 484. So 484 students, we want them to get some praise throughout the year. So we have started positive notes with Wolverine cards. So the district ordered all buildings, this isn't just at Laurentian, but it is district-wide, Wolverine cards that teachers can, or any staff, actually. It's not just teachers, parents. Anybody can write a hand-written message, positive message to a student and that student's parents. So we started doing that. We've, will continue to use Power School to send a behavior note as a positive one. We call it the Wolverine Way. And then we're going to continue this year to do recognizing our FERS. I'm sure you remember me talking about that last year, where we recognize a student from each grade level, from each class, actually, using FERS. So in the month of October, it was focus. The FERS is for focus, and I is for inquisitive. The E is for effective collaborators, R is for responsible, C is for compassionate, and E is for engaged. So this month, we've already had our nominees by our teachers, two from each class. They come, they get a certificate, get a picture taken, and then I draw names, one from each grade level, and they get a special prize for being nominated by their teacher. So we're going to continue to do that. And then we also added a good work ticket because this was just for, anybody could give a student something that they catch that kid doing well. And so they, we have little tickets that say good ticket that they... I've had custodians do it. I've had playground aides do it. I've had IDOC worker write one for a student. So we're getting a lot of participation. They nominate a kid. It comes into the office into a glass jar that I have. And then once a month, I'm also picking a name for them. So we're trying to get every kid recognized by having lots of different venues for our staff to promote, promote this. And so far, when I tallied it up, we had 24% of our students received one so far. That's kind of where we want to be right now, because we just started the school. So 24% of our populations have received at least one positive note from somebody in our building. So that's another goal that we have. And then, just a few things that we've done the last two years since I've been there, I guess. We've continued to go to Starbase. So our fifth graders went to Starbase in September. And one of the teachers had to take a personal day on Friday, so I told that teacher, I said, "Well, don't get a sub. I'll just go." I said, "I'll go for the day with the kids and see how, you know, Starbase for the full day." So that Friday, I went to Starbase, and it was really, you know, and the kids love it. It's all hands-on. This, what I witnessed was them testing out their windmills. So they each made windmills, and they had to grab a fan, and they were blowing the fan and testing it. And it, using a 3D printer, they had to create their own blades for a windmill, and then they got to test them out, which design was the best, to make it efficient. So that was really neat to see that in action. The kids loved it. It really shows them, what STEAM means, like what a career in STEM, I should say. STEM means science, technology, engineering, and math. So it's a great stepping stone for our Career Academy, because it's getting them exposed to those types of careers. Part of the, the day, they had a guest speaker who had a career in the STEM field. And so she talked about it, her field and how it relates, and kids were able to ask questions. But it's, it's a great springboard for our Career Academy to get them exposed to that. And then, the other couple of things that we've done the last two years is our sixth graders go to the STEM showcase in Hibbing. So they went to, on that, on October 4th. And that same day on October 4th, Friday, our kindergarten students who have for the last two years gone to Simics Farm for their pumpkin patch activities. So those happened. And the other thing that always happens in the fall is that fire safety. So we had that again. Our local firefighters from our local communities came together and put on a great presentation for our students, and then showed them all their trucks and their fire equipment and how they use it. So thank you to the fire, local fire departments. I have two more things, just a reminder that our, we have conferences at Laurentian Elementary. It's actually the same time as Parkview this year. So it's November 12th and the 14th from 3:30 to 6:30. And our families will be getting something very soon. I think it's this Thursday. Our teachers are going to send up something where they sign up for conferences. So the parents will be getting that information. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention, I wanted to mention Melissa Lotte. She's the one that is, that has devoted 30 years of her time to coaching volleyball. So I think we need to give her...
I tricked you just to do that.
Did you really?
No, I didn't. Well, I kind of thought about, I think, I asked her if she would come and talk about Abbott. But then I noticed on the agenda that she had, you know, retired from coaching for 30 years. And I'm like, I'm going to have to give her a special round of applause because to do anything for 30 years in coaching for junior high, most, right, of your career?
No, actually, I did JV for probably, what, 18 years, grand, do you think?
Yeah.
Yep, I did C-team and so...
30 years, that's, that's a lot of time.
A long time.
For 15 years, I did three sports. So I went volleyball, basketball, softball, flags, cheerleading. What else? I mean, yeah.
She does it all.
She's done it, she's done it all. So, you know, thank you very much for all of that because that, that shows a lot of dedication. But I actually brought her here to talk. She's our Abbott Site Coordinator at Laurentian Elementary. So she went to the Summer Institute with myself and a few others this past summer, and it was her first one. And because she took that role on as an Abbott Site Coordinator, and she's been doing a very nice job. I feel like this is the first year that we're really into it a little bit more. And I know it has to do with Melissa leading it and taking, you know, charge of it, getting it organized and ready to go for the teachers. So I just want her to explain a little bit about what she's been doing with our school, with our students, and our teachers.
Thank you.
Yes. You're ready.
Okay, good evening. As Principal Williams said, she asked me to join her tonight to speak on behalf of what Laurentian staff has been doing in the ADVID front. ADVID is an acronym for Advancement via Individual Determination. The strategies that we use try to put students in the driver's seat in regard to their own education on their path to college readiness. Over the summer, the state of Minnesota required all teachers to attend the Reading Academy. One of the overwhelming responses and goals that most teachers were speaking about in regards on our chat was the importance of bringing writing back into their curriculum. As an ADVID Site Coordinator for our building, I thought that maybe I could help the teachers follow through with this goal because as teachers, so many things start popping up, and writing sometimes gets put on the back burner and those, if those ideas aren't out there available for you. So I tried to make it so the teachers could be more intentional about planning writing in their curriculum. The idea that our ADVID team came up with was to introduce three new ADVID-approved writing strategies each month. We plunked them onto a bingo board where teachers would try to implement one strategy in their core curriculum per week. So we didn't want to pile it on every day, but if they wanted to, they could. If they achieved a bingo, they would get some kind of prize. Even though this is an optional activity, a lot have taken, a lot of teachers have taken the opportunity and in, and are enjoying the strategies such as note... the opportunity and in, and are enjoying the strategies such as note tents, 3-2-1 learning responses, post-its of one thing I've learned, one thing I question, DLIQs, which, what I did, what I learned, what I found interesting, what I still question. And all of these strategies can be implemented into any of the curriculum to reinforce what the students have learned while advocating for themselves because that's what we want kids to do.
And part of those, so our first winner of the Avid Bingo Board was Jessica Crowley. And I have to say that Melissa even donated $40 of her own and got ten, four $10 gift certificates to Starbucks for the teacher prize. So, I mean, she's not only of her, you know, all of her resources, but she's spending her own money on, on making this successful. So, thank you for all, all that you're doing.
Thanks, Melissa.
And that's all I have, unless you have some questions.
Questions for Angie?
I do have to say, it's kind of neat having my first grader come over and teach me some Spanish.
Oh, yes, we have Spanish, yeah.
Spanish, and he says, they sponge it right up, it's pretty impressive.
It is, the younger they are, the quicker that, and easier it is for them to learn. So, what is, how's you so far, John?
Well, colors and numbers and...
What does Verda mean?
Uh, green.
Is it green?
I have a question.
That was a pop quiz, holy smokes.
Just one quick question, you guys also use Orton Gillingham too, correct?
We do use Orton Gillingham, yes. Our, Melissa, as an interventionist, use it, but our, the majority of our staff has, have been trained, our teachers, in Orton Gillingham.
Thank you, just wanted to point it out, thanks.
Thanks. Up next is the student part.
I haven't done one in a minute. Um, so, I haven't done one in a minute, so I'm just gonna go all the way back. We did have a really successful homecoming week. Many people also really enjoyed, I personally thought it was really cool, the Supreme Court judges in coming and doing that. I got to be one of the guides, which was really, really cool. I got to spend the entire day with them and it was a really cool experience. Seniors, as I am one, we have officially started application season, a lot of us are calling it. It's stressful, but exciting. I've submitted two of them so far, but it's going well. Fall sports, they've been doing really good, we sent a few people to state. Just today, we did have a Ascenda Health Fair where, where we had a bunch of science classes, we had the opportunity to, like, get to see how different people work in the labs at Ascenda, so there was like phobotomy, there was all sorts of stuff like that, and it was really cool. Um, we have our Fall Formal coming up this weekend and NHS has been doing a really great job with that, selling, sending everything up. Clubs and activities, they're doing great. The ones that I'm in, I can see they're doing really good. We've been meeting regularly, there's like after-school tutoring, Hoco, like I mentioned, highway cleanups, book club, all sorts of things going on. We did a blood drive Monday the 14th, also hosted by NHS, they did a really good job. Friday, October 25th, there was a Halloween costume party night, so I, I thought that was really cool. And then, this was a while ago, but mid-quarter was already October 2nd and it's definitely flying by. And there's so many activities going on at all times, like different field trips and a lot of it is a career-centered, like I think it was a engineering field trip that just happened recently and it's all looking really cool. So, I'm glad we're doing career model stuff like that and so are a lot of students.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's it?
Yeah.
Junior representative.
We have a policy that we've been looking at, right?
Mm-hmm.
For that as well.
Right.
But we should definitely be working on it if it hasn't already started.
Okay.
At the high school.
Good point, yes.
Work in progress. Okay. Up next is 5.4 Class Size Report, so I don't know who's giving that.
Well, and members of the school board, this is from the Personnel Committee, wanted you to see this. It was also with a request at the last school board meeting. You don't have to do anything with this, this is mostly an FYI, so you can see what the total enrollment is by grade level. You can also see by building the number of students, you can see the number in the elementary. The teachers' names are listed, how many kids are in each section, you can see what that is. You can scroll through the high school, you can take a look at all of the teachers, every single course is listed there, you, per semester. And you can see how many kids are scheduled for each class. In each class right now, the Personnel Committee, and I guess the Personnel Committee, you can, anyone can certainly say anything that you want from that, but they did talk about it, but they do not have a recommendation for the full board, but they did talk about it quite extensively and also wanted you to see what the numbers were.
Okay. Move right along to your report.
I have a question. Will the uptick after eighth, our ninth grade from Marquette, do we get, is there a noticeable increase in students in that?
You have received additional students from Marquette, kind of, it's kind of random and it's kind of all through, but yes, you do receive, once you get to a certain grade level, you get a lot of...
Not like usually 10 or 20 or 15 or...
No, it, it's kind of, sometimes it's kind of random and it varies. Sometimes it's heavier, sometimes it's less.
Okay, I just curious about that, thank you.
So, Noel, you said this is for Semester One and...
Yep.
Do we have numbers for Semester Two if they're also going to have high class sizes like a lot of these are, which, you know, it's not, it's, I don't know, it's hard to see these high, high class sizes, I wondered about Semester Two.
So, if you're looking at the elementary, those class sizes are likely to continue if you're looking at the high school, which I suspect you are. They are still scheduling some of those, so some of those numbers are going to come down, but some of them are gonna come up. We typically have kids leave the second semester more than the first, which is why we have the ALP here because we want kids to stay in the system here. But they will be working at lowering some of those sizes, but keep in mind that if you see a 37, that means there's a 16 somewhere in the system too. So, but they, the counselors and the high school admin officer, they're constantly, it never stops as trying to knock down some of the higher class sizes.
The other thought I had was, so in some of these where the classes are really, really low, like, I don't know, eight, nine, six or four, I mean, we might, might want to maintain things like calculus for a small number of students. Not to, we, we, you can prioritize certain, certain courses that you, you, you agree and you feel it's important to keep as smaller class sizes, but hoping and thinking that some of these others, I can't find exactly right now, but do we really need to offer those and then that would free up another teacher and/or use that teacher to reduce class sizes in another area that they're licensed and, oh, let's see, well, resource math, we have to probably have that. But, you got the general idea that, and then in our academies, how many of these electives? We have electives, but you can only offer so many electives with so many students and then that's where you get the low class sizes. And so, I would hope that for the second semester, we're going to take that into consideration to maybe not offer classes with four, six, eight or whatever.
And normally, you don't, so what you're talking about, the high school enrollment, it's a guess as far as what kids are gonna take and we have kids say we want this course, then the admin makes the schedule and then kids sometimes change their minds in the high school and then they shift over to other courses and how many go PSCO, how many go College of the Schools. But what you're talking about describing, why are there some classes with low numbers, it is everywhere in all high schools. And it's a balancing act because for some of the courses, you know kids want it, you know they need it because sometimes they're College of the Schools or Advanced Placement, whatever. And so, you want to have those classes for the kids, otherwise they go PSCO or something else like that. But generally, we try to, we do try to limit how many of those exist because you really don't want very many of those single-digit courses. And so, that's one of the things that they'll be taking a look at for next year is when they do the course registrations and find out what the kids are interested, what the kids want to take, what can we afford to run, do we need to not run some sections, do we need to then redirect teachers and put them somewhere else? And so, that's part of the whole balancing act. And they'll do that again for next year and second semester.
Okay, and related to that, sometimes you can combine classes, like I remember in particular one in Evans Gilbert, we had, we combined Spanish two and three or Spanish three and four and that's fine and, and you can do that. And there are other things that you can combine, you could combine elementary grades too. I mentioned this at the committee meeting, that maybe to lower the class sizes in the second grade at Parkview, maybe we could take some first graders and second graders and put them in a class together, maybe do that to one or two classes and then that lowers the class sizes with the same amount of teachers. And one that just popped out at me here, going back to the senior high, we've got seven in Journalism, one A and three in Journalism, wait, that's two A, oh yeah, two A and two A. And so, why do we need two classes when two of them combined would be 10 for one class? I mean, examples like that would be more efficient.
Yep, and, and some of it also is what's opposite of that, what else is being offered that class period? And so, they're moving around to find out what works with the sequence, but generally speaking, you want to get those out of there if you can. And sometimes you just can't get all of them out, but you just want to limit them as much as possible.
And then, that's to say, and I don't mean to seem hard-nosed about it, but sometimes you'll have to tell students, we, we can't offer that, maybe we'll offer this every other year or maybe, you know, I don't know if Journalism and these others go all year or a lot of these are just semester classes or are they semester one and two classes and we just might have to say.
Well, fortunately, we have the resident expert here in the building and I'm sure, Mark Winter, can you tell us?
The Journalism Two is combined with Journalism One. Journalism Two is, are the editors for the yearbook, so they, they are combined. They're listed because they are a separate course, but they're the same hour with the same teacher, so they are combined in the classes, similar to, we have some German Three students that are combined in German Two. So, yes, like you're saying, in, in those cases where there are very similar courses, we do combine them when we can.
So, both Journalism Two classes are combined with?
Correct.
One, not just one?
Yes.
Good, okay.
Did you want to add something?
Thank you, Mark.
Of course.
Just like, with like the balancing, like I know a lot of my classes specifically, like CIS, they'll run for two hours, so say I did want to take Journalism, sometimes that overlap just doesn't work out, so that could also be some of the lower numbers there. So, I know that for me at least.
Thank you.
Perfect.
What does it mean by the different sections of PSCO, like why are there?
Let's go back to our dial friend. Mark Winter, you want to explain that one to the board?
So, when you have a PSCO or CI, well, which ones are you talking about?
Looking at, just right away, it has PSCO and there's like six, seven sections.
With my name.
Yeah.
So, so what they are, those are PSCO students for that particular hour, so we block that off, so it's not really a course, it's me as a placeholder. So, those are the number of students that particular hour that are off-campus or doing some sort of PSCO class.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Don't guarantee we won't call you back.
5.5.
Yep, yep, Mark, just stay there in case they, just don't move. Next, I'm kidding, so, I don't want you to stand there too. So, moving on to a different topic, Superintendent Ford, this is just so let all board members in the audience know, we have the MSBA Leadership Conference coming up on January 16th and 17. I hope all or most board members can attend, I know a lot of you have been very great about attending that over the years. And for members of the audience, it is the gathering get-together for school board leaders throughout the entire state of Minnesota. So, it's in the Twin Cities at the Convention Center because that's kind of geographically the middle for, especially for the rural schools. And so, the school board members have, they hear speakers and this is all related to running a school board, common problems and issues that you would run into on the school board level. It's a great conference, so just encourage the school board members to attend and it is probably one of the best conferences for school board members to go. So, just putting in a plug for the MSBA Leadership Conference and that's it.
Well, do we encourage or do we have, or have we had any student groups do demonstrations like now we're in the academy model and I remember just massive, nice media and, I don't remember robotics, but we have all these different things now from now on.
Are you talking about at MSBA?
Yeah.
Yeah, but Foster actually went down about three or four years ago and he took up like five booths and he had everything that we did there.
But students also go down sometimes.
And the students were there, yeah.
Okay.
Park Rapids, their robotics games, been there every year, I've been there.
I think you're just encouraging that, to have our students there.
Yeah, keep that in mind throughout this year for next year and, yeah, or even, I don't know if you can still register, but it's a good opportunity.
And one, another thing for everyone to know is that Tim is big at MSBA, I don't know if people even know this, he's on the, what are you, on the Executive Board for MSBA, he's been there for a long time. Every time they turn around, he's at some meeting involving with MSBA. So, Tim has been behind the scenes, doing a lot with MSBA for Rock Ridge on a statewide basis.
So, you can keep us in the know of certain things that they're looking for, certain...
Yes. And I always, I always try to send the CTE to think about bringing something down because they're also looking for student projects and, and his was impressive there, he went down there, so.
Cool, okay, I agree.
Okay. Move along to 5.6, and a motion to approve the treasures report.
I moved. Second it.
Motion by Lotteger, second by Westby, any discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item six, policies, I will ask to approve these as a blanket policy from 6.1, 215 to 6.42802.
I'll make a motion to, oh, go ahead.
Some will.
Motion by Lotteger.
I'll support.
Supported by Johan, to approve as a blanket, any discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Administrative item, item seven, consider approval of amendment for the city of Evans purchase agreement to purchase school land and buildings. Item, consider approval, we have to get a motion for that because we're changing it a little bit, right?
Yeah, you do need to approve this and members of board, this is really pretty simple, you already have the main agreement, you've already approved that. The city of Evans just wants to amend it slightly, so you give them permission to go in so they can put a heat source into the gym, the music area and all that. So, that's really what this is about, giving them permission to go in so they can put some heat in so they don't run into issues and problems.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Motion by Johan, any discussion?
I'm glad you explained that because I was going to ask, what's the difference between the old one H and the new one H? And then, it refers to a yellow attachment Exhibit B and a lease agreement form is attached as Exhibit C and those were detached and so...
And those two exhibits were from the original agreement, they haven't been altered.
So, they're the same.
Yep, they're the same.
Any more discussion on 7.1? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. 7.2, we need to determine a school board meeting, when we can have a meeting to canvass the elective assaults, get out your calendars.
I believe, Brandy, didn't you suggest this a while back in Evans Gilbert, that if we can't have it on the regular Monday, we have it the next day? I think we carried that through from Evans Gilbert to Rock Ridge and I think it might be in one of our policies. And I think it might be in one of our policies. So I would suggest the next day, Tuesday.
I don't recall, but so it's between the eighth and the fifteenth is what the timeframe is? Sometime between November eighth and the fifteenth.
We can't have it on a regular meeting on the eleventh.
Pull up our policy.
No, not a meeting on the eleventh.
That's the same.
You can have it on the twelfth.
If you, if you pull up the policy and see if I was correct about having it the day after a regular meeting.
I, I, that's reasonable anyway.
I cannot, on the twelfth, I, I have, uh, school conferences at work, so I would not be able to attend.
Thirteenth?
Why don't have all of us here? No offense.
Yeah.
I mean, if we met, if we were able to meet at, um, say six thirty, seven o'clock, I could probably do that on Tuesday, twelfth.
It could be anytime.
If people are willing to wait for me and have a meeting at seven, six thirty or seven.
So meeting at seven on the twelfth and do, you can do a smaller agenda if you wanted to.
Yeah, all your years.
Well, we could.
Well, it's not a regular meeting.
It would be just for that.
Just for that.
Right, Noel?
We could do whatever the board would like.
Do a regular meeting too. You don't have on the eleventh.
We don't, okay.
Whatever you want.
The eleventh is Veterans Day.
Yeah, so put on the twelfth and do a regular meeting if you wanted to.
But she would have to be here at seven. So you're making special arrangements to be here at seven. A, a regular meeting would start at six. A regular school board meeting.
So we can call a special meeting on the, on the twelfth at seven.
Okay, so we'll just have, we'll call it a special.
It'll be iffy for me, but.
So you can't, you're telling me you have to have two, forget this on the regular agenda for the school. We don't have a meeting on the eleventh, have a regular, uh, special meeting.
You can't meet on the eleventh.
End of that, end of that.
So you could have, you could have, you could just kind of not have your regular meeting and just cover everything later in the month. Or you, you have to have a meeting about this. You could simply have a one topic school board meeting and do this.
I suggest that because then everybody could be there for their regular meeting.
I agree. I concur.
So canvass the election results and get any, any board business done that same night at seven o'clock.
No.
Just the canvas.
Not a regular meeting.
Okay.
The canvas at seven?
Right.
On the twelfth.
Correct. Um, I'll move that.
And support.
Motion by Sorkin, support by Johan. Any more discussion? All's in favor of having our next regular board meeting, November twelfth at seven o'clock. It's not the regular board. I mean, having, excuse me, excuse me. Having a school board canvassing meeting at that time.
It would be technically a special meeting.
Correct, yep. We'll take care of the posting at Craig.
Any discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There we go. Moving along. Close session pursuant to Minnesota State Statute thirteen D subdivision three B to engage in confidential discussions. The school board's legal counsel related to the, to the threat of litigation related to pending litigation in the case of Paulie Sorkin versus Rock Ridge School District, court file twenty-four one three three three. The school board seeks specific legal advice on the threat of litigation and its potential relationship to the pending litigation. Potential and existing claims against the district, the district's attorney analysis of the same. And the district's option for responding to the potentially resolving such claims, the, the discussion is pending litigation paired with the threat of, of adjacent litigation dictates the absolute need for confidentiality. Next part. The Minnesota Open Meeting Law, Minnesota Statute thirteen D point zero five subdivision three B allows school districts to close a meeting to engage in client, attorney-client privileged discussions. Those discussions will include the review of confidential data and the threat of new litigation related to the ongoing litigation as outlined in the agenda dictates the new, for the, the need for, for, the need for confidentiality and attorney-client privilege. Discussions concerning the lit, concerning, concerning litigation strategy. In balancing the purposes served by the attorney-client privilege against those served by the Minnesota Open Meeting Law, the need for absolute confidentiality and frank discussion with the district's attorney outweighs the public's interest in these discussions under the circumstances. It would be determined, it would be detrimental to the district's best interest for the board to hold a public discussion with the attorney where any adverse party or their attorney could listen or to be made aware of the district's attorney's advice. Thus, the district, thus, in, it is in the district's best interest for the board to obtain legal advice in a confidential setting to maintain the attorney-client privilege accordingly. I will, I will hereby entertain a motion that this meeting will be closed pursuant to attorney-client privilege for the reason cited.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Director Johan.
Support.
Support by Director Lotteger. Meeting.
Any discussion?
Any discussion, I guess?
Yes, I'd, uh, like to make a few comments for the record. So, um, I request that this proposed closed meeting be open under Minnesota Statute thirteen D point zero five subdivision two B that states, quote, "A public body shall close one or more meetings for preliminary consideration of allegations or charges against an individual subject to its authority." A meeting must also be open at the request of the individual who is subject to the meeting. So I so request this meeting to be open. Uh, second, um, the notice names a supposed threat of litigation and I'm unaware of any threat of litigation. The only litigation I'm aware of is my ongoing suit against the district for retaliation. The Minnesota Supreme Court has stated, "We are concerned about the ramifications of the fact that open meetings may be closed to a lot of council members to meet with an attorney about how to view a threat of litigation relating to a public matter that has yet to be decided. Such a holding might well eviscerate the open meeting law." Um, just another note on, on the, my request for the meeting to be open. There was a Minnesota Department of Administration Advisory Opinion, May twenty-second, twenty nineteen. It regarded the Tower, uh, the Tower City Council. And what the commissioner was, um, asked to address was, quote, "Did the Tower City Council violate the Minnesota Open Meeting Law when it closed meetings to consider employee misconduct allegations after it decided to hire an investigator to look into the allegations?" The city's attorney, um, thought that they could and they, um, they were well within their rights to do, do so. But, um, the commissioner's opinion was, once it, the city of Tower, the Tower City Council, decided to ha- hire an outside investigator on our, in this case, I believe, I believe that Chair Addy and Superintendent Schmidt were the ones who decided to, uh, hire an outside investigator. So it did take place. An outside investigator did do an investigative report. So back again to the opinion, to quote, "Once it decided to hire an outside investigator to look into the allegations against their clerk treasurer, the council apparently determined that disciplinary action may be warranted. Accordingly, all subsequent meetings or hearings related to those specific allegations must be o- open." And so his opinion, the Tower City Council did not comply with the chapter, Open Meeting Law, when it closed to consider employment misconduct allegations after it decided to hire an investigator to look into the allegations. So for those two reasons, I still do request and I wanted to be on the record that, um, that I, I requested to be open.
And I'm attorney, so what do I?
So yeah, so my question is if she requested.
Members of board, do not talk to your attorney right now.
Okay.
Um, you're still in open session. Um, we are recommending you go into closed, uh, session. And on the advice of your school attorney, we also recommend that you go into closed session.
And yet we can't.
We have a motion to go.
Yeah, but we have a motion to keep it open, so I feel like.
No, it's not a motion with my.
A motion, it's a request.
Request.
And the only thing I would say on that is, part of it is she's quoting something within a municipality with the city, which they have different rules and regulations than the school board.
Uh, that's not, they, they have to abide by the open meeting law.
Yeah, I, I just, um.
Also, just one more thing, and not only the Tower situation, but July twenty twenty-four, um, Minnesota House research document in Minnesota Open Meeting Law, they also referenced the, um, the commissioner's determination in the Tower case. And, uh, they said, again, they reiterated thirteen D oh five subdivision two B. If an outside investigator is hired, the meeting should be open because the public body has moved the past preliminary consideration, consideration of allegations or charges. And that's on page two. You have, you have a, you have a vote, you have a vote to take and a choice to make. And I just wanted to make those comments.
So we have, we have a motion to go into closed session and a second. So if there's no further discussion.
I, I, I mean, I just wanted to, it's proper, so it would be nice to have.
Noel is advising.
I know, but this was before she requested it be open.
Right.
It is not in the district's, it is not in the district's best interest. You need to go into closed session. I'm strongly recommending you go into closed session on this matter.
Got a motion by Johan, support by Lotteger, to go into closed session. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Four, three, four, three. Four, three, the closed session to discuss this matter. At this time, meeting is closed. I would ask the public to step outside the room.
Yeah.
Okay, it's eight fifty-five. Um, we come out of closed session.
It's the time.
Forgot what to say. We're out of, we're going, we're going to regular session now. Um, so.
At eight fifty-five.
After discussion in the meeting, uh, I'm gonna get a motion for.
I make a motion to, for the resolution to censor a school board member, Pollyann.
Motion by Culver Dahl for censure. Your support? Your support? Your support? So it failed. The motion failed to, uh, lack of support. Go anywhere. Failed unless. Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to say something. No matter how that vote turns out, I don't see where the justice would lie in the fairness where the school board would come out of a closed meeting after reading a report, an investigative report, deliberate, and without myself having a chance to get any, any response, I think that is very unfair, very unjust because in fact, I've also read the report naturally, and I find, um, I find presumptions that are far-reaching. I find information that is inaccurate, and I, I don't know where the due process or the justice is that I don't even have the time before a vote such as this to respond. I, I'll just leave it at that.
Any more discussion?
My understanding is you did have the opportunity to respond with counsel.
I did not have the opportunity to respond to this report. I gave input. I was interviewed. I gave input, and then a report came out by, um, a person, interviewers or investigators, um, opinion of what happened, what the testimony was. Now, I did not have a chance to, nor are you giving me a chance to respond to this report, and I'd like you to all put yourselves in that position and see what you would think. Yeah, the report came out, but is it, is it assumed one hundred percent accurate just because an investigator put it on paper? I'm telling you there aren't, and it's unfair for you to make a decision. Make a decision at a later time. I'd be accepting of that as long as I and/or legal counsel would have a chance to respond. I would never do this to somebody.
Any more discussion?
Can I move to table it, or is that too, or you can't do that?
There's a motion on the table. Table can, motion to table can be forwarded at any point in time. Just at least know your parliamentary procedure.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
That's a roll call.
Do a roll call vote.
Did you have a second to table? You didn't even ask for a second to table.
Yes, you have a, okay.
I, I would second to table it.
The motion by Dr. Culver Dahl to table. Support by Dr. Westby to table.
So we'll vote on that first?
Yep, yep. Any discussion on tabling it? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose?
I get the votes.
Do I get the vote? I do, don't I?
You do. Always a, motion fails four three. Removal.
Oh, there is a motion on the table for removal.
All roll call vote, roll call vote.
Dr. Reardon?
Yes.
Can you look me in the eye and vote, you people?
Yes.
Okay. Brandt?
Dr. Lager.
Okay, John?
Dr. Yuhan?
Yes.
Dr. Haddie, say yes.
Dr. Culver Dahl, no?
No.
Dr. Westby's a no. Dr. Sharpen is a no. Motion passes four three.
Then we have additional.
On, uh, item ten, our next meeting will be, uh, Monday, November twenty-five, twenty twenty-four at six P M. Eric Rockbridge?
Nope, we have the twelve.
Oh, yeah, excuse me, excuse me, twelve. At seven P M. For canvassing the, uh, votes.
Does the resolution become public, um, public information?
Immediately.
Twelve two, general election day is November fifth. Votes are open at seven, from seven A M to eight. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I will make them.
Dr. Lager?
I second it.
Support by Dr. Westby. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.